Good morning and welcome to City Council's Continued Budget Hearings. I'm Councilman O'Connor. I'll be chairing this this morning's meeting. We are here with the Public Safety Department and we are going to go through three separate funds. The Stop the Violence Trust Fund, Office of Community Health and Safety, and the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. We will begin with our Budget Director, Mr. Bill Urbannick, to go over this. And then I'll pass it off to, I believe, the Public Safety Director and his guests as well.
Thank you, Councilman O'Connor. First off, we have the Office of Community Health and Safety. The mission of the office is to improve community safety and well-being and support public safety personnel by building a public health-informed response continuum. Also, within this is the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Stop the Violence Trust Fund was created to support services and programs that prevent violence and criminal activities, and also to support community health and safety programs. In 2022, an amount equivalent to 6% of the Bureau's Bureau Police's budget was transferred into the fund, or shall be transferred in the fund. That matching amount is required to increase until it is 10% in 2026. The Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention is housed within the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, as are the staff of the Office of Community Health and Safety. From a budgetary aspect this year, the Stop the Violence Trust Fund per Section 237.02B of the City Code, Stop the Violence Trust Fund is required, that's 6%. The total in 2022 is $7,234,000. Now, the Stop the Violence Trust Fund contains the majority of funding for the Office of Community Health and Safety and the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. In addition to funding, the Office of Community Health and Safety, the total budget in the operating budget is $5,067,000. With the exception of $15,000 Big Bird contract, the entirety of the budget amount is new for 2022. Largest expense is $5 million for AGH diversion program, as previously authorized by council via the American Rescue Plan Resolution. The Office of Community Health and Safety has 12 employees housed within the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. There are no proposed changes from 2021 in that budget. Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, the highlights there, the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention has five employees within the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. There are also no changes proposed from the 2021. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. I will start with our Public Safety Director. If you want to just go through everything and then tell us who's going to discuss which department.
Sure, Councilman, if we may, can we do some introductions here?
Yes, that's perfect. And we are joined by Councilman Wilson.
Go ahead, Laura.
Hello, my name is Laura Dragowski. I'm the manager of the Office of Community Health and Safety.
Hello, my name is Brennan Coleman, the Operations Administrator for the Office of Community Health and Safety.
Shetara Murphy, Deputy Director, and I also manage the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention.
And I'm Wendell Hezrich, Director of Public Safety for the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman, and we appreciate your time this morning. And as I've, as we've discussed last week with the Public Safety overall hearing, that was more or less the response to public safety issues. This morning, we're going to address probably a more important issue, which is the prevention. And the more that we do with prevention, hopefully, the less we will have to do with response. I mean, over the last year, year and a half, with the mayor's initiative and the development of Office of Community Health and Safety, as well as Councilman, the council's initiative with Stop the Violence, I think that I believe that we are on the right course to trying to address many of the important issues to the City of Pittsburgh, to include the problem with individuals that don't have housing, the drug issues, the issues downtown, but more importantly, with the Stop the Violence, with the gang issues and the murders and attempted homicides, the shootings that are occurring throughout the city. So with that being said, I have to commend Laura Dragowski and her staff with what they have done as far as laying the foundation for the Office of Community Health and Safety and with my Deputy Director, Shetara Murphy, and her work with Councilman Burgess and yourself with Stop the Violence Trust Fund. So with that being said, I don't know what you would prefer that we go over first, whether it's Stop the Violence or the Community Health and Safety. If you just want to go down the line.
You know what, I can actually open it up to council members for questions and then just see where they take it. I know, and I apologize, I know Councilman Lavelle has been on the call. Councilman, if you were here first, would you like to take the first round of questions?
I'm okay, Councilman, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I'll pass it off to Councilmember Wilson for comment and questions where needed.
Okay, thanks for everyone for joining today. Thank you, Chair. Good to see you.
Good to be back.
And Director. You, all the other sub. Laura Shetara, Brennan, good to see you. And so, how are we running this? Am I asking questions on all of this?
Yeah, whatever I want. I would just do it open, that, you know, whatever you have questions about each department, go for it. Yeah, that's what I just found out. Yeah, I'll ask, after her, I'll go, or after Councilman, I'll go to Councilman Drucker.
I mean, I'd like to give. So actually, I was wondering this, can you explain what, so I'd like to, I mean, if Shetara would like to say something, and also Laura would like to say something, I mean, that's about their own individual. I'm not sure if that's something you want to go towards, but. Yeah, I kind of like that. I mean, I'd like to know what, and I'm kind of curious on what. I see Stop the Violence, so does Office, before you do that, does Office of Community Service and Violence Prevention, does that? That just uses, both of these just use the trust fund? Okay, this is just set up differently, because in the past, we would put like, the trust fund on the back. Sorry, I'm paying attention, paying attention too much.
Mostly, it is funded by the.
Okay, yeah, if both would, I mean, I would appreciate if they want to make some points about what they're doing.
All right, thank you, everyone, for the time today. As Mr. Urbannick shared, our office was created as part of a response to longstanding needs in public safety and in the community to prevent and address crises. We focus on not just that point of crisis response, but also upstream interventions that can be executed to prevent those crises from escalating. And then I think the area that maybe our first responders in our community see, but has not been brought to public attention, is what happens after a crisis. And so often, we have our current engagement of individuals in the crisis and public safety continuum, because there are not always robust supports to assist individuals after. As such, we've created the Office of Community Health and Safety, again, funded by the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, in an effort to better meet community needs and also reduce the impact of unmet needs on our first responders. I think it's clear that our first responders are not, have not been adequately equipped with resources to address the needs they see in the community very often, nor do, and they would articulate this as well, nor are they often the best people for certain situations. So this year, it has been a staffing year. I anticipate that there will be questions regarding the rapidity or the speed with which we've staffed up. We presently have four full-time staff, one half-time staff member, and one intern. By the close of this year, we'll have added an additional two full-time staff members. And early next year, we will add our community social workers, which we have up to six in the budget, but we have, are pending acceptance of the jobs. And so we will allow that to be something we share next year. The programs that are critically important are our High Utilizer Program. Now, this is a program that focuses on individuals who have higher rates of engagement with the public safety continuum. And we started with the fire department, which I think may not be intuitive to most, but our fire department is very often responding to calls of lift assists, other non-emergency situations within homes. So we, working with Lieutenant Horoski from the Fire Bureau and Dr. Sheila Roth, identified 40 patients since July, who had had a total of 511 fire engagements. This is not just an issue of cost, but it's also an issue of preservation of dignity and healthy environment, living environment. So through their work, and in partnership with Dana Brooks, who's an intern in our office, they've been able to stabilize more than 20 of those patients. They have 32 pending patients. And this is with, again, one half-time staff member in our office and one part-time support from the Fire Bureau. Novel pieces of that were that we have actually now an ongoing partnership with Adult Protective Services, where they're working with our staff to triage cases. We have regular case conferencing. And with the liaison program that Dr. Roth has been building, we will have representation from fire, or from EMS and police as well, where we'll be able to do cross-public safety or integrated public safety review of patients. We also have, and very much thanks to Public Safety and Deputy Director Murphy, we have Alexandra Abud, who is our Victim Assistance Coordinator and our Social Work Manager. During the course of this year, she's worked with over 700 survivors of crime. And much of that work was done while part of the Department of Public Safety in the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. She will be next year overseeing our social work team. We received technical assistance grant from the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the Bureau of Justice Assistance to have a data sharing agreement, working directly with our police, and Dr. Angle from University of Cincinnati, which will allow us to iteratively improve our crisis response system. As part of that, we'll be developing a co-responder academy for civilian responders. And I think this gets to the big point of note, is that the speed with which we do this has to be balanced by safety. Right now, we do not have civilian direct dispatch responders. And that's not to say that can't be done, but most importantly, we want to preserve the safety, not just of our first responders and our co-responders, but also of our community members. We know adding individuals to that scene, to that mix, can result in escalation of safety. So we will be working directly with the University of Cincinnati and then with our Police Bureau, Fire Bureau, and EMS Bureau to ensure that we're co-training our staff and our co-responders, civilian co-responders. Additionally, we will, as I mentioned, be hiring our community social workers, who will be co responding and serving as sort of triage, site triage and liaison. So working with police and other first responders, but also assisting with calling in other resources. Part of our challenge is that our first responders are required to know the universe of resources and services. And I think that is a Herculean task for anyone. Finally, well, not finally, I have plenty more I could share, but I'll try to cut this a bit shorter. We did launch our partnership with Allegheny Health Network this year. I think there's some note, and this is our, the Urban Health and Street Medicine Program. I think they are working of note are their just sheer number of client engagements and services rendered. They're operating in half the city with, as you know, as Mr. Urbannick shared, with the goal of scaling through the ARP funding. Since March of this year, they've worked with 360 people in Zone 1, 194 in Zone 2, and 172 in Zone 5. Total engagements with unique individuals is 726. Total engagements is more than 4,300. Additionally, they've connected 107 people with benefits, vaccinated 213 people, and had 515 public safety co-responses. I know that there's, again, an urgency to do this. And I think what we're trying to be judicious about is, is we are doing co-response. We're just not putting media in those co-response situations. Other things that are important to note, we have funding from the Health Department, and we're launching LEAD, Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion. Also, through that funding, we've had the technical, or the support to launch the state's first pre-hospital buprenorphine program, and we're working with Johns Hopkins to evaluate that. We've worked with the administration to decriminalize fentanyl test strips, and we've worked with the Bureau of Police to expand the availability of naloxone to our first responders. Finally, we are developing Neighborhood Health and Safety Academy that reempowers individuals in the communities to be part of the Public Safety Continuum, focusing on existing community go-to individuals. And we have launched our Community Listening Campaign, which is focused on making sure that community voice is part of every step of our work. As I mentioned, we presently have four full-time staff members. We project that we will spend just close to 300,000 this year of the projected spend of $903,000. Our goals for next year are critically the expansion of the Allegheny Health Network Co-Response Program, the launch of two additional community health hubs, the onboarding of our community social workers, moving toward that co-response and ultimately, alternative response with direct dispatch, and the expansion of our pre-hospital buprenorphine program.
Thank you, very, a lot of things go. So I'll start with that, and then I'll, that way I got it fresh in my head. So how do you see this, this growing in the future? Like, the total budget is 5 million, what do you, as we, is this, this doesn't, this factors in the social workers?
Yeah, so thank you for asking. The, if we're looking at the operating budget, the 5 million listed is 5,67,000. That $5 million is direct, is ARP funding that will go in contract to Allegheny Health Network. The $67,000 is from the General Operating Fund, that's focused on training, recertification of staff, our Big Bird Professional Services Agreement, harm reduction consulting, public health programming, operational supplies, office supplies, general health programming supplies, uniforms, harm reduction supplies, and AEDs. So that's 67,000. Our staff budget.
A lot for 67,000.
We, you know, yeah, we're going to make that work. It's great. And then I'm trying, it's hard to pull out. Okay, so our staff budget expected for 2022 is 1.2 million. So that's not reflected in the 5,670, so that 1.2 million is coming out of the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
Okay. And then, in the future, do you have, I know this is in the 2023 budget, but is that, like, are we basing how many social workers we hire based on, like, what you see in, in the data, in terms of the, like, the lift assist data you were talking about?
That's a really good question. So, you know, we want to be good stewards of public funds. I think if we had the ability to hire more community social workers, that would be a priority for us. With six, it affords us the ability to have coverage in two zones, daylight only, plus follow-up or what we call post-engagement, because we know that a major part of the crisis response is just not responding, but ensuring that post-engagement follow-up and focus on high-utilizer programs. Our first set of social workers are only going to be working daylight weekdays. So in order to expand that, I think we had projected the need for 16 social workers. But we also recognize that's quite a lot. And so we're looking at other funding sources and also ways to partner with Allegheny Health Network. But what we, you know, we want to be clear, we don't want to make Allegheny Health Network into the same situation we have with police, where they're responsible for every, everything outside of, you know, what fire and EMS do. So we do have those social workers as triage managers focusing on what other resources and partners can be brought in.
Then this, we have this Big Bird, is that, is that incorporated, is that incorporated into the? I forgot that that was even there. Is that incorporated into, man, I knew it existed, I just didn't realize that was overseen by the OCHS. So is that, like, how do you coordinate with them? Or is that just a thing that is fully running by itself?
That's a, that's a good question. So we have, the $15,000 is part of, I think, like, web hosting and professional services with informing design. We have a Mariport Vista member, Alina Chulik, who is overseeing Big Bird. So she's responsible for the outreach to partners, to make sure that the resources are up to date and envisioning strategic opportunities for expansion. Things we're thinking about are like the transportation hub expansion and ways that we can make sure that people who have those unmet needs are able to, you know, be aware of Big Bird.
Okay, so when you talk about this lift assist, does that mean that we're going to be saving money on the fireside? Or like, what's the long-term?
I'm not sure.
Solution to that?
You know, I think with staffing, it's not, it's not a financial play, although I think there's probably money saved on burnout among staff. I think going to the same person's house, you know, 18 times in a month and encountering conditions that are probably pretty startling for most to consider is really burning out our staff, not just our firefighters, but across the board. So I think this is more about, like, quality of life and dignity. We have people who are really kind of like forgotten by society. And ultimately, I think our first responders are waiting for them to, you know, it's a matter of, can you catch the situation before it escalates to, you know, something really tragic?
Yeah, so something you didn't, well, maybe I didn't hear it about overdose, because both of those, lift assist and the overdose, every time they respond, the fire responds to that, they're pulling the truck out. Is that a, Director, is that a public safety risk in terms of, like, if they have to respond to a fire then? Like, if they're tied up with a lift assist or?
Well, as Laura mentioned, I mean, there are some individuals in the city that fire, between fire and the medics, they've responded to literally dozens of times. And, you know, with her, with the program that she's working on, and we've already had some successes, is we find them better accommodations, people that can assist them. And a lot of these individuals, as you mentioned, they need lift assists. And sometimes it's two, three times a day that firefighters are responding to help them out of bed, help them back into bed. And with the development of this program, if we can find them some additional care or find them better accommodations, living accommodations, that basically reduces the response of fire and EMS personnel. And it's the same with drug overdoses. I mean, the idea of Narcan, you know, it's great, but it's only a Band-Aid on the system. And if we can find them the further care to get them off the drugs, then number one, we've saved their lives. And number two, they're in further advanced care to get, to kick the addiction of being on drugs. And in a result, we estimated that every time that fire and police and EMS respond to a drug overdose, it costs the city $2,000 minimum.
Is that, does that cost, I mean, are you factoring in employees or just the truck?
Sure, it's employees, it's, it's the equipment, it's the, you know, the wear and tear on the vehicles. And it's putting a medic unit and a fire unit out of service that it could be used, utilized somewhere else in the city for someone else.
So, you know. So these, I mean, can a social worker help lift someone up? I guess I'm just really dialing in here.
They can help somebody. More importantly is, they can find additional further care through the two hospital systems or through nursing assistance, that if the individual wants to stay in the house, they can have care workers come to the house, not from the city. Or in some cases, the individual really should not be living alone.
Okay.
And that's where the social workers work at, is explaining to them what the options are, because a lot of times, especially the elderly, they don't know what their options are.
Okay, so, I had a thought, I just forgot it. So that's very interesting to me, because, like, is that, is our, are we doing the same that other fire departments are doing and EMS departments are doing all across the nation? Like, does every?
Well, I can't.
Fire department do, like, is that the only entity that can literally, like, go in and lift someone up, help them in bed?
Well, I, I don't know if fire departments or EMS or police do it, but a lot of the other cities are doing the same thing with safety personnel. And like I said, it's not that we want to pass the lifting up to the, the office, but we want to find further care to help them. So that's, that's the idea, that there may not be, there may not be a monetary value put onto it, but it will save, it will save the actual first responders, you know, their time and their effort to respond to other emergencies by instituting this system here. And it's already, in some cases, been very successful.
Who, in terms of the, the new pilot with the, how EMS is providing buprenorphine to people who experience overdose, are they, are they, how do they coordinate that with fire? Because fire usually is the first to respond, and then EMS, you know, that, like, they'll send the fire truck out before EMS, and then?
Anytime that there's an individual that's unconscious, not breathing, or what we consider an E0 incident, yes, fire will respond, because they are, in many cases, closer. But that doesn't eliminate EMS responding. I mean, even if the fire or police personnel, because they have Narcan also, if they respond, it is still a requirement, the EMS responds to follow-up. And in most cases, we, in all cases, we try to convince the patient to go and seek care in the hospital. Sometimes they refuse, because the Narcan brings them back to life, more or less. And there have been times that CPR is being done, when the firefighters or police officers show up. And with the use of Narcan, it brings them back to life. But that doesn't mean an hour, two hours, or eight hours later, we will not be back, meaning public safety, we will not be back at their residence. And that is one, that is the idea of the new drug that is out there, is to help them initially kick the addiction of reusing the drug. And that, too, if it's successful, it will, if it's successful once, it's well worth it. But if, the more and more patients that utilize it and follow up with the additional treatment, hopefully, we'll get off the drugs.
Okay, all right, well, thanks. Thanks for everything you guys are doing.
Well, I'll, if you have more questions.
We're just doing a whole, yeah, if you don't mind doing just a review as well, like, some bullet points in terms of what you're doing.
We, to avoid, you know, repeating a lot of the things that we discussed previously, we've had extensive conversations around GVI, the initiative, what the outreach workers are doing. I'll provide you an update of where we are as far as the expansion goes. So right now, let me take a step back. I'll talk about what we're doing as trust funds concerned. We'll talk about the numbers, and then I'll talk about the initiatives. So as you see, there are only five employees from the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention funded out of the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. I believe that's around $370-ish thousand per year coming out of the trust fund for staff. The rest of the money from Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention is devoted to contracts that support intervention and prevention work. So right now, we currently have in place a contract with Operation Better Block that supports our technology needs and some accountability measures. We have a contract with Freedom Indeed, who is Reverend Cornell Jones, and he oversees the whole operation as our Street Outreach Director. And then we have a contract with a center that cares, that supports outreach efforts and social service support at $2 million annually. And then what we don't have listed in 2021, but you will see it in 2022's budget, is our community investment grants. We just wrapped up the RFP process. Poise was awarded that contract. I will go into detail about that now, and then I will go back to GVI. So we.
It's surprising, I'm on a committee, I don't, I mean, I can't be on that committee in my offices. I didn't know that there was a decision made, so that will come before council. I had some questions about this specifically, because, I mean, I'm looking at Philadelphia, and there are over 500 homicides, and like, we're nowhere near that, we shouldn't be anywhere near that. But they, you know, just trying to understand what they, they kind of have like a similar, you know, Stop the Violence Trust Fund Special Committee, and they, just like the conversations around spending money with Poise, they were kind of going that angle as well, in terms of, you know, putting money into the community in a similar fashion. I just have a lot of questions about it. I guess my major concern is just, you know, there's no, I'm, I mean, I hope, if that's going to come to council, that it comes to council with a very thorough plan to spend. What we've done in council was 80% of the fund, right?
Well, that's only $1 million.
For Poise, only 1 million?
Only 1 million. So the, the rest of the trust fund is not going to Poise, for them to give it out in community investment grants, whereas money earmarked for council initiatives.
That's not the larger one that, okay, so my understanding was, okay, so that's only going to be a million?
Yes. Yes, so it'll be issued in two rounds, five hundred, 500,000 in the spring, 500,000 in the fall. And then we're working with Poise actually set a dollar amount, um, to each particular grant and how many rounds we'll do. So that process is in its infancy stage because Poise was just awarded the contract. Um, Sally from your office sat on those.
Yeah, so they took a vote in there and everything? Okay.
What we did was, we had to score the RFPs.
Is there an official committee? Cause I'm just like, even with the, even with the, um, what's the recent one we did? Oh, the Parks Trust Fund, like, we don't have an advisor committee. Is there an official Stop the Violence Trust Fund Committee that's like officially known to the public who's like sitting in on those meetings?
So we had a committee, um, some time ago, and it was comprised of individuals who worked in various entities of government, community leaders, community stakeholders. We are now revamping that committee now that we know that we really want to focus on a specific type of preventative and intervention um, efforts around this money. So that is also something else that we're working on right now, is actually being intentional about, you know, who is on that committee and what that committee will actually do, what reports that committee will be providing, and how we'll go about measuring community impact.
Okay.
So, um, regarding that community investment grant, so the process will come before council. We, once we finalize everything with Poise, the structure, how the monies will be issued, and also the evaluation process that they're going to create. We will have meetings with council because this is something that we want you all to help push to your constituents, and so we'll need your support and your help with that. Um, you all know what's going on in your districts, you know which organizations are actually out there, you know, doing work and, um, around violence prevention and things like that. So this will be a partnership because we'll need your, your support and your help in making sure that, um, the money is going to the correct groups.
Yeah, um. Okay, well, we'll have the conversation when we get there. I, yeah, I, I mean, I have some concerns about that. So.
We can set up a meeting, address your concerns. I want to make sure, um, it, not only your concerns, if there are concerns from anyone else in council, before we actually finalize what that process will look like with Poise.
Hmm.
Um, want to make sure that your input is included.
Okay, um.
And then as far as the GVI expansion goes, right now, um, we've spent the last month and a half retraining current staff, identifying, um, what communities of focus, uh, within each police zone, we're going to be operating in. So we will be meeting with, uh, council to talk about which areas in your district will have dedicated outreach workers and interrupters, just so that you know who those individuals are and you have access to them as well. Because sometimes you hear about things before we hear about them, before, you know, even the police bureau hears about them. So we want to make sure that we're tightening and we're strengthening this partnership so that we're, um, addressing issues on their onset and not letting things go, you know, for a few days before actually, um, jumping in and taking action. So we were, we are in the process of retraining. That has been going very well. And then also finalizing the recruitment process, how we're going to go about, um, getting individuals in the areas in which we currently don't have them now, since we are in the midst of a citywide expansion.
Okay. How are you planning the, the spend, the Stop the Violence Trust Fund? You know, for the remaining millions of dollars that are in this year and then also going into future years?
So those will be, um, dumped into two buckets, uh, preventative work and intervention work. And with conversations with Councilman Burgess, he would prefer to sit down with council and identify what you all's needs are to make sure that we are using the trust fund to address, uh, things that concerns in your districts as well.
In my thoughts, rather, we should sit down with professionals. I would like someone to have a, like a post agenda on exactly, you know, how people stop the violence and what all is incorporated in Stop the Violence. Um. You know, I mean, I just think it's, we can't continue going on a path of, this isn't director's view, I mean, it's just in general, you know, constantly hear that this, I know this was started with Councilman Burgess some time ago. We can't continue to go on this path of listening to council members, because I, I actually don't think that we're the ones that would have all the answers. Um.
We're aware of that, but we also want to make sure that your input is included.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I just, I'm just really hesitant about the way we're, um, going down this path of, of, um, you know, we're looking, we literally put five percent match on the funds, and that's just going to balloon to, you know, X number, million, millions of dollars and it's just, this is largely, you know, this is the public's money, just like the Parks Tax Trust Fund. Uh, you know, the public actually voted for the Parks Tax Trust Fund. This is something we did in response to, um, the violence that was happening. And, um, you know, if, uh, if someone, I mean, I'm happy to organize like a post agenda with you. Um, and Councilman Burgess to dive deeper into this, to, to see what all can be incorporated in, you know, the, um, or what could be spent from Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Uh, so other than that, I'll I'll, I'll hold my questions. I appreciate everything you're doing. I was hoping I'd see Cornell and, uh, thank him for all the great work he's doing, and, uh, thanks for coordinating with that. Um, how is that going with the, you know, using the Operation Better Block, the technology with the outreach workers?
It's going well. They like it. They prefer, I mean, technology is the way to go, so it's easier for them. Um, it gives real-time data, so they, they like it.
Okay. All right, great. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, council member. Uh, I will pass off to Councilmember Strasberger. I thought I saw Councilmember Gross, but I, I see Councilwoman Strasberger was first anyways, so Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for, um, being there in person today. It's a pleasure to, to join you virtually. I, I don't think I have too many more questions, um, hearing the hearing the overview and hearing some of Councilman Wilson's questions really answered a lot for me. Guess on, um, Office of Community Health and Safety. So much of next year's budget will be, will come from, um, the, uh, ARP funds. And I guess as we continue to, the desire to, I would hope, grow this, the, the number of staff, personnel. Um, we're probably going to have to be thinking ahead to 2023, 2024, when we might not have access to the same kind of not federal funding as we do today. And so it would be my assumption that we'll have to find funds within the capital, within the operating budget, um, outside of federal funding. Is that what your, what your assumption is, Laura, or, uh, Director Hisrich, or any, anyone else who wants to take that?
Um, thank you, Councilmember Strasper. Yes, I think that's correct. I think that we would anticipate some of the funding would be part of the city's operating budget, but I think we also need to look to partners, uh, who are host to the program and, and others. Um, considering that this is not just a public safety program, but ultimately something that's alleviating the impact on emergency departments uh, and inpatient care. Uh, the sooner that we can support individuals and intervene, as, as Director Hisrich indicated earlier, uh, the less likely they are to have an escalating condition that requires, you know, more expensive and intensive care. So I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
And so partner groups, including potentially AHN and also the County Health Department?
So I think, um, you know, right now, like, the County Health Department has, um, uh, um, fat, funding from the CDC principally to address overdose, and that's our partnership with them. I, it, uh, we could look into, uh, funding from the Department of Human Services at the county, um, which I think has some upwards of a billion dollars in funding that they allocate. So there may be opportunities there, especially as they've convened their crisis responder stakeholder group and are considering how to expand these programs. I, I know that we've been partnering with them and they've looked at this as a model, so I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
That's great to hear. I mean, given that it is, yes, it's, um, there's a public safety component and there's a huge public health component. So to be able to partner with, um, and there's, I mean, it's human services too, so I think this could be, um, an excellent kind of continuation of our partnership with the county on a number of items. We have, you know, how many years ago, we consolidated our 911 call center to be a city-county function. There are other examples of that. Um, even just Alkasan as a board, right? But, um, but, um, but to be able to in, increase our shared services around, um, public health and public safety in this particular way, I think would be be really beneficial and there'd be shared costs for everyone too.
Councilwoman, I, I will say that, you know, I've almost completed six years here, and over the last eighteen months, I've never seen a better, closer, closer working relationship with the county. I mean, I came here and it was basically very separate. I mean, we would talk, you know, occasionally at meetings, but now there's ongoing meetings going on between the city, the county, and even a lot of the suburban communities. So, uh, it's still a work in progress, but I think we are making strides to solidify that relationship.
Thank you for adding that, Director. That's great to hear. That's great to hear. Um, I don't want to cover too much of what was already said, but just to sort of reiterate, um, because I was still sort of getting my, my bearings as I was hearing you, Laura, describe, you know, what you've done and your plans for this year. We are currently, we do have co, co-response, um, or a co-response model. We do have coresponders going out, and this year we will grow that effort, correct? And we will have, um, a number of individuals doing a number of other things, uh, whether it is working with community members to help train them or to, um, uh, for the diversion program, um. Trying to think of the other things in here. So I, I think th- there's so much to, to what you do, but I think what the, what the public sort of thinks of when they think of the Office of Community Health and Safety is co-response. So, um, I'm really looking forward to seeing that continue to grow this year and continue to evolve and the relationships and trust being built, which I think is a huge part of it. And I'll just say it again because, um, we can never say it too many times, the other cities that have this kind of model, it took at least four or five years to really feel established. And the ones that have been doing it for thirty years, of course, they're going to be, you know, have learned from their experiences and have a model that works for their city. So, um, we're now just in the kind of second year of doing this, and I'm really looking forward to see what, how we can grow it and continue to build that trust and continue to build the relationships and to, um, you know, then result in better care for people, um, upstream care as, as we discussed. So, I don't know. That's not really a question. It's more of a comment, but I'm happy to, to hear, uh, any response that anyone might have to that.
Um, Councilmember, thank you very much. I, 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 um, I think that we want to be sensitive to the community need. This isn't happening as fast as, as it's needed by our community members, nor is it happening fast enough based on what our first responders are experiencing. Um, I, I think that we, when people, uh, call 911, um, they don't always, um, reflect on what it's like to stand in front of someone who's in a, a really dire situation and to have very little to offer that person and the toll that takes not only on the, the, the person who needs the help, but the person who went into these professionals to help. Um, I think if we, we consider what burns people out, uh, it's, it's this sense of lack of control or lack of ability to change outcomes. And I, I think what we are, are really focused on with co-responses is not just having that right responder, but also recognizing that we can expand the scope of practice or enhance the scope of practice for our first responders, such that when they are in a situation that's appropriate for them, they have a lot more tools to address it, and that they're rare, far more rarely involved in situations where it's not appropriate for them. Um, and I think, um, again, you, you mentioned programs that have been around for thirty years. I mean, Kahoots is one that has a lot of national attention. Um, and I think every program that's built has to be built in the ecosystem where it lives. Uh, Kahoots was built out of a private mental health clinic, um, in a, a west coast city that's very different than ours. And it's, it, it has so much to teach us, but also if we're not, um, valuing our community's needs and our first responders' needs and our neighborhoods, you know, which are all very different and unique, then we're not going to build a program that's successful. And I think that that's something we saw with the, um, development of GVI, right? Which is there was a lot of work to understand national best practices, but that ultimately the program had to be and continues to be a, a program that reflects community values, um, and community needs. And so I think trying to balance that speed with something that's going to ultimately be successful has, um, an ongoing process that we're very happy to have the privilege to do, but it, it is something that, that takes a, so, more time than we, any of us would want.
The first responders are welcoming this across the board. I, as I've stated in previous meetings, I mean, our police officers, I mean, they're not only police, law enforcement officers, but they're, you know, they're in the parole of firefighters, EMS, plumbers, Uber drivers, uh, and, you know, to have this, this additional resource and these subject matter experts that deal with mental health crises every day and home, and, you know, problems with drug addictions. And I, the, the law enforcement, uh, and first responders are like the initial emergency room doctors, but now we're looking to increase it to the specialists, you know, the cardiologists, you know, the, the the doctors that have, or the, the individuals that have the advanced care to address the problems, not only at the time, you know, during a, an emergent situ- situation, but long-term that the, you know, police officers, the medics and firefighters just don't have the time to address.
Thank you. That's a great description. I, that exhausts my questions. I'm happy to hear questions from my council colleagues.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I do believe, I do want to say that we do have Council President Smith with us as well, and I want to thank her for listening in on this conversation. Uh, I see Councilwoman Gross. Um, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I've been listening in. I apologize. My computer's been fussy, so I apologize. Am I clear? Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for being here. I was just sitting back and taking some notes and I, I, I did miss also the, um, overview from our budget office, but I have it in email in front of me. And so I wanted to go over some of the dollars just to recap, so I'm sure that I'm, uh, got all the information. Um. Just as a reminder, the Stop the Violence Funds that we created, um, which has the match at six percent this year, is a, um, a matching aw- award, if you will, to whatever our police budget is. So it would, there were many, uh, reports a year ago that it was taking money from the police budget, and it is not. Um, so our police budget this year has grown to over a hundred million. And while the percentage has grown from five percent to six percent match at Stop the Violence Fund, it also, just the dollar amount is at, uh, just a, a matching percentage of the police budget. If we doubled our police budget, the Stop the Violence Fund contribution would double. Um, and so the total amount this year is at 7.2 million, roughly is what I see.
Correct.
Uh, thank you. And, um, I see that the Office of Community Health and Safety Budget is at five million. So is that entirely allocated from the Stop the Violence Fund? I'm not looking at my, I don't have my big hard copy of my budget that I should be looking at to, to make sure I'm getting the source of funds right.
What, what you're saying is the ARPA funds as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, um, I don't have how much is coming from. It's hard for me to, it's hard for me in your budget summary to go and see all of the sources of funds, so I'll have to refer back to my, to my budget for that. Um, and I don't see a budget under the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. It just says that it's five employees.
That's correct. That's, uh, that's directly in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Uh, that amount is, uh, the five employees roughly, um, $300,000.
Thank you. But that as well has, uh, about a million dollars allocated to the Poise Foundation. On the Stop the Violence Fund. Right. And then the, the Office of Community Health and Safety is kind of like a pass-through because it's giving, how does it work with the partnership for AHN? We're allocating $5 million from the Stop the Violence Fund, which again, comes straight out of the operating budget and is additive on top of what the police budget is. Where, that is going to the AHN partnership. So how does that work? And again, apologies if you've actually gone through this before. Is it like, we've written a check to AHN? Is it employees? How does it work?
Councilmember Gross, this is a, a good question. I think this is a, a bit of a confusion because that five million number is so big, it looks like it's our operating budget. Um, so there's, if, if you look from Stop the Violence.
So there's, if, if you look from Stop the Violence, our staff is, I'm trying to pull this up quickly. I don't know if there's a sum total for our work.
I just got mine to just open. Two apologies for talk, I don't mean to talk over you, but I was just trying. The, the, our office, um, of council office did send us the attachment from the, the budget. And so I've finally gotten mine to open too, and I'm scrolling down.
So I think our staff budget for our office, which is all funded from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, is roughly 1.3 mil-, 1.27 million. And then what you're seeing with that 5,67,000, 67,000 is from the general fund for our oper- operations budget. So things like AEDs, uniforms, training. The 5 million is the ARP of funding, as Mr. Urbannick shared. The way that we have funded the program to date is through the ESG Emergency Solutions Grant HUD CV COVID funding. Uh, so I think the initial allocation was 1.2 million dollars, and that was on a reimbursement basis, uh, which is typical, the way that works. Um, we have not finalized the contract with Allegheny Health Network for the $5 million. Again, that's the ARP funding that you're seeing is the 5 million plus the 67,000 for our operations. Um, I, I think that we will approach that in the way that's most fiscally responsible in terms of, in terms of the, the, the contract, but I would assume it will like, uh, likewise be on a reimbursement basis. We anticipate that the major costs in their first year, in addition to staff, which I think will be the vast majority of that budget, will also include the establishment of additional hubs. Uh, right now, those community outreach hubs are in zones one, two, and five. So, uh, one on East Ohio Street in the north side, one on Smithfield downtown, and one on Broad Street in East Liberty. Uh, we know that there's a tremendous need in the other council districts and police zones, so we want to focus on that. Uh, vehicle acquisition, because right now we have staff using their personal vehicles to respond to 911 calls, and obviously that's not a best practice. And, um, uh, build out of additional teams, so not just the outreach teams and the response teams, but we're seeing a tremendous number of gaps across the board, which, you know, I think is more to come on what those teams will look like. But we do know that it's insufficient to just have street outreach and co-response, and that we have pretty significant needs on the public health side as well. So that is something that we can provide, you know, certainly council will be part of that process, and we will provide that information to you as it becomes available. Uh, but again, our budget is around 1.27 million dollars for our staff, $67,000 from the, which comes from Stop the Violence, $67,000 that comes from the general fund for our operations, and 5 million that's ARP, as you said, that will be a pass-through.
Thank you. I was scribbling away while you were talking. And I did think that, that this is incredibly helpful. It's, it's, I think, it's the most important part of a budget hearing is for the public to understand what money is going to, and it's really not very clear from these pages in the operating budget. It wasn't clear to me. Um, so thank you for that answer. Uh, and for the public's record, I'm scrolling through pages six and seven of the City of Pittsburgh operating budget, as proposed by the mayor for fiscal year 2022. And, um, so, again, I, and I'm just reiterating what I've heard, that it really, I think, bears repeating that what I hear from the Office of Community Health and Safety in interrogatory with other members' questions is that there is a mission to decrease the first responder or emergency response, whether that's fire, I've heard, and EMS, and police to 911 calls. We talked about mental health interventions. We've talked about even lift assist here, which is not something I remember from our other conversations at the table around the Office of Community Health and Safety, in response to Mr. Wilson's questions about, uh, fire department responses, overdose response. And so what I heard from different parts of the response from the administration is that the goal is really to decrease, uh, not just the first responder's response to these 911 calls, but the goal is to actually hope that there is a decrease in the 911 calls, right? And so someone who's repeatedly calling for lift assist to 911 gets into a better living situation, or a situation where there's somewhat a caregiver instead of an emergency responder. And similarly, that maybe we can get to a place where we have a decrease in mental health issues for individ- or individuals in mental health distress that result in 911 calls. And then in overdose, similarly, getting people to connect it, again, to caregiving, to treatment, so that they don't have that emergency that is 911. So, and that is why I'm hearing there's an expansion of not just street outreach, and not just co-response, but also kind of another kind of, uh, additional staffing that would help result in basically less distress amongst our residents. Did I summarize that?
Yeah, I, exactly. However, the important thing here is that, you know, that would be one advantage to, you know, decreasing the 911 calls, but it's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight, but the most important thing here is for the individuals that need the help. You know, whether it's mental health issues, or drug addictions, or no place to stay, or in their house alone, and they have nobody to care for them. I mean, yeah, we have, for years, you know, we, we responded, you know, numerous times to several residents, and, you know, we try to find them help, and we only have a few minutes, meaning the first responders that go there. And they make a few phone calls, they put the person back in bed, they make sure that they have their medications. But, you know, five hours later, they're still in need again. And the important thing is the residents and the visitors of the city, and, you know, those individuals downtown that are on a street corner that have no place to go, but want somewhere to go, or addicted to drugs, and, you know, is they're addicted to drugs, they're trying to find money to support their habit, and then they wind up, in some cases, breaking in or doing thefts or robberies, et cetera. And that's, it's a snowball effect that keeps going around and around in circles. And yes, if we can reduce the call volume for the city, that would be, that would be one distinct advantage. But once again, that may not occur for months or years down the road. The important thing is if we, we save one life, or we help one person, it's well worth it. And that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, we're not doing it alone here. We've, you know, Laura, myself, Shetara, we've all reached out to other communities, other cities, major cities that are going through the same, the same thing that we're going through. And it's part of revisioning law enforcement response. And there are many times that, uh, individuals that call police officers, and the police officers, they receive several weeks of training on how to handle these incidents, but they certainly don't receive the years of training that social workers or individuals that work, you know, for the group violence intervention have received. And that's, that's what we're trying to do.
And not allocating their time to this social work, right? So that, that, we're making a budgetary choice here to allocate basically social workers to social work, um, instead of officers to, or firefighters, or EMS to social work. There's really been a gap. And I, and I just want to acknowledge that I think it's valid for the public to say, hmm, isn't the county supposed to do social work? And I, and I, I, you know, I acknowledge that I heard you say that there is greater coordination. But basically, right, I mean, there was just still a gap. Yes, there is, you know, funding and resources and social workers at the county level. And yet, even given that, we just had, um, enough, there were so much gaps that people are falling into, that we were using, we have been using our first responders, our public safety personnel, to do basically, you know, caregiving, or that kind of social work connecting to resources. And so now we're, we're having to allocate city dollars to staff up to, um, to fill that gap, so that people can get connected to the resources that they need. And the resources that they need are not necessarily a trained firefighter or a trained police officer. But then I want to acknowledge that, so that's that kind of, um, that's the bucket for, uh, community health and safety, because these acronyms are confusing. And then the other, at the table today, also, we have, um, Community Safety and Violence Prevention. And I think it's a valid question for people to be confused about, basically, that, that they're different missions, and they are, um, it looks to me, or, you know, what I hear today is that they are, they're serving different parts of our constituency. And I just also wanted to kind of frame that as an open-ended question. Really, how much, how much is your work overlapping at all?
Um, there is some overlap.
Are you seeing some, like, overlapping households, or, or not?
Well, there is some overlap, and so there is goo- it's good that we have the Office of Community Health and Safety. Um, we do, uh, see, when addressing issues of violence or violent acts in our communities, and why they're happening, and really getting to, to the root of, um, trauma treatment, there are a lot of social service needs, and, uh, our outreach workers aren't equipped, uh, to provide those social service needs. So it's great to have a partnership with OCHS, uh, to make sure that those services, uh, are provided. And there is a, a large population of homelessness that we deal with, especially in the black communities, that look, it looks very different. And so, again, we have the Office of Community Health and Safety, who can help navigate and guide us as we try to enter some of those spaces, and help support our outreach workers in that.
So, the, the trauma was, it was not one of the kind of three areas. Was someone else speaking at the table? I couldn't tell. I had kind of mental health issues, lift assist, and overdose that I heard today, but there's also the kind of like trauma, um, or, or household violence, that health and safety is also overlapping with violence prevention.
Yes.
Because decreasing contact with first responders because a social worker is more appropriate isn't necessarily the same response. So I just wanted to make sure I was listening and hearing that. And I'm, I could just speak on maybe a little bit more to some of the examples where they are both, either both, you're both housed under the Stop the Violence Fund. And so I guess I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about those connections.
And we are, uh, in a similar fashion of OCHS, uh, want to ensure that we are decreasing the interactions that our residents have with law enforcement. We want to make sure that we're decreasing, uh, the likelihood of them entering a system that we all know that, you know, once especially black people enter, you know, this criminal justice system, it is extremely difficult to get out. It is very difficult to navigate those spaces. And it, uh, really impactful in a very negative way on the quality of life of the individual, the household, and the community at large. And so, uh, during the intervention work that our outreach workers do, they're making sure that they are preventing retaliations, so that our law enforcement, uh, our officers do not have to infiltrate that community, you know, looking for individuals who may potentially retaliate. They are taking, you know, some of that lift off of them. But in that work, uh, we are addressing a lot of the trauma that's taking place in the community. Uh, there's, uh, food inadequacies, there's homelessness, there's, uh, a lack of access or an understanding how to reach, you know, mental health, behavioral health services, uh, various other social services. And so, um, some of the work that Alexandra, before, you know, joining the Office of Community Health and Safety, working very closely with our outreach workers, making sure that, uh, they have the information to provide that support. And so with Alexandra being in that office, and OCHS being able to expand in the way that they are, you know, the work does overlap, but it overlaps in a very necessary way.
Just a couple more questions. So, logistically, how does that happen? You said, you know, you mentioned the staff kind of residing together, and I think that's, that's helpful for me to understand kind of how it coordinates. Do you use the same software platform, or are you moving towards moving that, that same software platform?
No, we don't use the same software platform, because it actually provides, um, resources for the target population that we are working with, uh, within GBI. So individuals who, uh, need access to work, um, it just, just various different things that don't, that, that, um, individuals who are working with OCHS might not need. But in the event that there is a need, and, uh, there is treatment that is needed, access to different facilities, OCHS is there to kind of guide us through that process. And that's just simply a phone call and email connecting Laura and Cornell, and making sure that they're coordinating.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's right for us to kind of pay attention to this, this difference between your offices, and make sure that we're not just replicating, replicating the same kind of gaps that have created our situations at the county level.
And we work closely with Dan. Um, he is fantastic. Again, we talk about like homelessness and what does that look like? You know, that's not our area of expertise, but it's, it's a problem that our outreach workers come across time and time again. So Dan, who, you know, through the AHN program is affiliated with the Office of Community Health and Safety, he's been a gem and a fantastic resource for our outreach workers in that space.
Councilmember Gross, I could just add too, I mean, I think Deputy Director Murphy said it perfectly. I think that, that the critical thing to think about is that we're moving toward more relationship-based responses. People, you know, one of the challenges, and, and I'm sure you've heard this in the community, is that, you know, someone shows up in a uniform, and you don't know them, you've never seen them before. It's an, it can be a very intimidating experience, but when Reverend Jones or one of his colleagues or staff members show up, people know them. Um, and that means that they may only cho- trust Reverend Jones to address something, even though Reverend Jones is not the subject matter expert on that front. And so this is where there's a, um, I don't want to say informal, but more of a, a partnership that, um, if, if Reverend Jones is trying to work through an issue related to homelessness, and he is not an expert on navigating county services, that's okay. He's got a backup. He's got someone in the booth saying, "Don't worry, I got you. I'll, I'll, I'll make some calls, I'll get you some options." And then you can deliver those options in the way that's most appropriate to that person. And that's really intensive, right? Because I think with all of the unmet needs in our community, we're trying to figure out how to be more efficient, but, but realistically, we have to be more relationship-based. Um, and I think that the other point you made is a really valid one. Why is the city doing this, um, instead of the county? And I, you know, I, as Director Histrick said, we have a, a continuously improving, I think, relationship with the county, but they're working through these kind of challenges in 130 municipalities. And I think that means that they have to create responses that are, uh, more generalized and are not necessarily, uh, tailored to a community, a neighborhood, a district, a zone. We have a really different place that we sit, where we have oversight through the Public Safety Department of our first responders, and that direct connection and knowledge of what they need. We also have, I think, far more close relationships with our constituency. And I think between those two things, we're far better positioned to create responses, whether it's through the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, and the Stop the Violence, um, excuse me, GBI, or whether it's, uh, uh, issues related to homelessness, mental health, substance use precariousness generally, uh, that we can address jointly or through the Office of Community Health and Safety and AHN's program. Um, we, we just have, we don't have to be as focused on data. We can be data-driven and not data-focused. And I think that that's, distinction is critical, because if we are just looking at data, we're missing all the nuance of what's going on. And I think when we ha- if we have to do this to scale with 1.2 million residents in the county and 130 mu- different municipalities, we'll lose the nuance. And frankly, I don't think that the programs we're trying to establish will work.
So, and I'm glad to hear that, because I like to always remind myself and remind, um, the communities we work with that we are only 300,000 people, right? We're not New York, we're not 10 million people, we're not, you know, 8 million people, we're 300,000 people. So we can take better care of each other. And so that's what I'm hoping your office will do. And, um, but on the other end, we do want to see results, uh, because we are dedicating intensive resources here, and, uh, we're talking about our neighbors, and so we want to see them have better care, and not be falling through the cracks, and not be living in alarming, um, living conditions, as you mentioned. And so I think if there is a place that should be connecting resources around, whether it's the, the, you know, the rental housing that they're living in, as you say, the precarity of their food, or their, their housing, or their, um, you know, kids who are homeless, you are the connectors, right? That is, that is actually what you're there for. And so we will want to see measurable results too. And so, uh, just to wrap up, even though you just said you want, not being data-driven, which, on the front end, which I appreciate, we should be people-driven on the front end, but on the back end, can you talk about some of your metrics by which you will know you're succeeding?
I think Deputy Director Murphy and I, this is, um, uh, an ongoing point of focus. And just to clarify, we want to be data-driven. And just to clarify, we want to be data driven, but not myopically focused on data. I think that's the concern is when you lose the community connections. But, um, there's sensitivity in this work, uh, that I think especially for Deputy Director Murphy, and I'll, I'll defer to her on that point, that makes it difficult to always capture all of the information that makes evaluation straightforward. Units of services, they're measured in human services, uh, don't always account for, um, taking someone to lunch so that they didn't get into an escalation of a conflict. So we are principally focused right now on numbers of people and connections to particular services. The outcomes of those services though are both harder to track and not always within our purview. So, uh, a, 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 a social worker, an outreach worker could spend an, a tremendous amount of time making sure that there is a warm handoff to a program, walk that person through that program. But ultimately, we don't have control over how that program supports people. So I think we're, we're at a very surface level now, looking at the number of people engaged, the number of total engagements, the types of services connected, the places where people are receiving those services. And whether those individuals have been served before, I know it's been brought up before, but part of the, I think, important thing to note about data is it's only as good as it's, um, it's, it is the fidelity of its collection. Um, and there were, um, upwards of 50, uh, people who were living in Homewood, who were experiencing, as Shetara said, homelessness that didn't look the way that people expected. And they were for years left off of county counts, um, of individuals who are unsheltered. And that dictated where people were focusing, uh, resources. So, um, we, we are trying to do our collection and our evaluation on the, uh, that, that is balanced against the impact on the direct service providers. Uh, we don't want our direct service providers to spend four hours working with the participant and four hours documenting in three different systems. Uh, so we're striking that balance is difficult. We've seen it go both ways in the, our community, uh, based organizations. But I think, you know, we're open to that ongoing collaboration. For example, with our overdose efforts, uh, Josh Schneider, who is an overdose prevention coordinator and paramedic who works in our office, uh, developed a dashboard to assess what was occurring, um, in the event of an overdose when our first responders were, uh, on scene. And what he found was approximately 40%, uh, up to 40% one in the month of individuals who had experienced overdoses and had an EMS response had declined transport to the emergency department. Uh, as Director Hisrick said, that's, you know, that means that people, um, lose that opportunity to be connected with resources. Uh, so what we did is worked directly with Director Hisrick and EMS leadership and medical direction and UPMC to develop, uh, the third in the country pre-hospital buprenorphine program. So we're trying to use data to drive, as you said, how we're responding to these situations. And then I think the evaluative, uh, piece is, is more, more challenging, but a work in progress. And I, I know Deputy Director may have more to share on that front.
Yeah, I had on the GVI side, and we've, we've discussed this problem for several years that really numbers are difficult. And people don't admit because of GVI didn't go out and kill somebody. And I mean, really the only success stories that we can go back on is if in fact there are the rare cases of people say how GVI assisted them. But I go back to the July 4th celebration of this year where we had, uh, we had threats out there that there was going to be gun violence. And we used Reverend Jones's GVI workers to go out and walk the streets and along with our police officers. And that night, uh, which I thought we were really going to have some type of violence, we were successful. There was no violence whatsoever. So, I mean, even though there's not articulated nu, you know, numbers to show that, that in my opinion is a, a success, a success story. And, you know, we are going to have isolated incidents of violence that, that, you know, we're not going to be able to prevent. But hopefully within time, the homicide rate will go down, the number of active, or number of shootings will go down. And hopefully that kids that would have got into violence have basically decided that violence is not the direction they wanted to go through the help of our GVI workers. And I'll turn it over to Deputy Director Murphy if she has anything additional.
I want to, um, kind of move back before we talk about the measurables to a point that you made about, um, services provided through the county, through the county and where we are now. I feel like we are in, uh, we have such a unique opportunity to really service our residents the way that they need to be serviced, to actually provide, uh, that individual, individual attention. But most importantly, help them walk through systems that, uh, they typically would not get the assistance to walk through. Or, you know, to handhold them through that because the processes are very intimidating. There's a lot of write tape, you know, we're dealing with individuals who just got out of jail, might not have a cell phone. So then how do they set up appointments to schedule housing? You know, how do they, they don't have access to internet? Is a library open? How are they going to get there? These are all the problems that, you know, our outreach workers are dealing with. And, um, to really put a spotlight on, uh, a success story from the partnership of, um, the GVI outreach and OCHS. So because we are so partnership and relationship driven, we received a call, our outreach workers received a call that an individual was, uh, set to be released from prison soon. And, uh, there were some, some concerns with that individual, as to why they went to prison, you know, what happened. But the point was is that that person is getting out. And we also knew that that person did not have a place to stay. So we were able to work with OCHS to make sure that that individual had housing before leaving Allegheny County Jail. And if it was left up to the individual himself or focusing, or I'm sorry, working through systems on his own, he would not have had access to adequate housing, um, upon his release. And that is very important because when you, uh, uh, public safety is, uh, is the most important factor to us all. When you do not feel safe, when you do not feel secure, um, you're prone to make bad decisions. And so we really helped that individual from making a bad decision. He did not have to worry about where he was going to rest his head or doing something bad to, to get means to rest his head. He was able to work with us, the city services, to get the support that he needs. So, um, I do want to emphasize that, uh, we have a very unique opportunity. It is going to take some time for us to grow from, you know, the, the GVI and the outreach perspective as well as OCHS. But, um, you know, please bear with us through this process. We want to make sure that we're providing the resident specifically what they need. As far as, uh, GVI goes, the overarching objective is to reduce homicides, to reduce shootings within our target population, which is young adults, you know, that, that age of 18 to 30 year olds. And it's very crucial because they are their parents, you know, that's a teen who's on the verge of going left or going right. How do we, you know, uh, provide intervention or preventative services to make sure that that individual goes down the right path? You know, what are we, uh, what support are we wrapping around that family? So we're measuring, um, interactions and engagements. We're measuring the resources that we provide, but most importantly, did they actually utilize those resources? And taking a step further, and if they did not, why? Because there are lots of things out here, uh, for folks as far as resources and social services. But they're not all effective and we need to figure out why. And so if we can partner with, um, community organizations, with the county, with social service providers to help them understand maybe why or why not these services are not working for the individuals who are accessing them. I think, um, that's golden within itself. And, um, also are we even providing the right types of resources? So there are numerous things that we're going to measure in the future. We really hope to have, um, a dedicated analyst to this space because we want to know what does impact in the school look like? Right now, uh, we are very active, we're active in a lot of schools, but I'm going to use Perry as an example. There was a lot of violence and fighting, you know, into the schools. It was just not a safe space. Our outreach workers with community leaders and school administrator, and you know, um, the, the, the school police were able to come together, our CERs and our NROs, to actually create a plan to figure out how are we going to make this school safer? But more importantly, that, that group was able to boost morale into the school to make the kids actually want to come to school. And parents were now aware of what was going on with their children, you know, in school. So if they need to, you know, change what after school care looks like, after school follow up to make sure that these students aren't engaging and, you know, uh, disruptive behavior is after school. That's what we're doing. And so again, having, um, an analyst who was dedicated to this space to actually show us, you know, what all, what, what does all of this mean? What does the community impact really look like? And, um, are we measuring the things that we need to measure properly? We have crime analysts, they're great, they're overworked. I'll advocate for more crime analysts all day, just a little plug for them. But, um, we need someone who can actually come in and analyze crime data for, from a community perspective and not for, um, tools or resources for law enforcement. So those are two separate conversations. You can have the same set of data and actually grab two, um, different things from them. And so we want someone who can actually look at our crime data and see how it's impacting our community to make sure that not only city resources, but community resources are being used properly to address those concerns.
Sounds like a more of a sociologist than a.
Yes.
You know, so, yeah, which is like completely get, I completely concur having a background in sociology, not at all in criminology, but still having a background in sociology. And, um, so thank you, I'll just wrap up by saying, I, I, I hear that the, there can be a kind of like circular and hermeneutic, almost informed use of data in your adjusting your programming, finding gaps, filling those gaps as you kind of work with these communities. And also I'm glad that you were able to answer the questions about how you might overlap because I, I do think that as you progress in your work, my hope is that we see that there were ripple effects that are, um, to your kind of investments in providing care and lowering precarity that, um, we, what are now compounding social problems on a daily basis that affect individuals? Because there are so many weaknesses in their social support network because there are, um, just those kind of compounding problems with their way that institutions are negatively impacting these communities, um, that we're trying to, to do all of these different programs to counteract that and provide a kind of supportive network. So I'll stop my comments there, Mr. Chair. I, uh, I really was happy to hear, um, you're very kind of long and even though they're complex answers, that it makes me feel, um, hopeful, hopeful about the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we are also joined by Councilman Burgess. I see him on the screen, Councilman.
Yes, I can't see who's all at the table. I know I can see, um, uh, Director Murphy, Director Hisrich, I see Laura, is that, is there anybody on this? Panelists, hello?
Uh, hi, uh, Councilman Burgess. Uh, my name is Brennan Coleman, uh, the Operations Administrator within the Office of Community Health and Safety.
Okay, so I just couldn't see who's on the panel. So let me start off by first of all, thanking all of you for your work and your partnership and doing this vital work. After listening a little bit to Councilman Wilson, I realized that he's fairly new on council and I've been around so long, perhaps, um, my story, um, is not as well known. I mean, I've been doing this so long perhaps that people have forgotten. And so let me sort of, people may wonder why I have been so involved, or at least you hear my name so involved. My mother-in-law was shot and killed in her place of business. My father-in-law was shot. My grandfather was shot and killed. My cousins were shot and killed. Members of my church were shot and killed. My mother's sister was shot and murdered. And my mother had a nervous breakdown and from which for the next 30 years, she would never recover, which is the reason that I went into ministry in the first place. My wife's brother committed a homicide. He spent 23 years in prison, dying in prison. His son, which is now my son, my adopted son, we adopted him when his father went to prison. One of my sons is his son, actually my nephew. I have spent my whole life is a reaction to gun violence. It is something that I live with every single day. I ran the forecouncil primarily because when the kids in my church were being shot and killed, I, I felt powerless to change it. So I've dedicated the last 20 years of my life, at least trying to understand and in what small part I can do, be part of the solution. Now, whether or not I am an expert in this area, I do not know, although the experts say that I am and that my name appears in the published research about this work. And so I've spent the last 20 years bringing various violence reduction strategies to Pittsburgh and being part of its design. Whether it's the Shot Spotter Program, the Maryland Authority Assessment Program, the National Initiative to Build Community Trust, which focuses on racial reconciliation, procedural justice, implicit bias. Um, all of those works, I was before that a participant in the One Vision, One Life with Richard Garland and Take Lee Thompson. And again, if you ask them, they will say, and the first game peace summit I was a part of. I've been in this work over 20 years. I have talked to the originators of the Boston Miracle. Personally, I've been to Boston, I've been to Chicago and saw their anti-violence reduction matters. I've talked in Indianapolis, I've talked to leaders, I've been to conferences. I've been trained by, uh, the, the, the experts at John Jay College. I, I do advise you, I have two books in my office, I will share them with you if you want to learn the work of this. The National Initiative for Safe Communities is, and the Trust and Justice Initiative Duck Order, two websites if you want to read. Also, there is a, a part of Blue Ribbon Studies from the National Institute of Justice. Aaron Dalton, who is the county's, um, um, Director of Human Services, actually worked for the department. Her and I designed, because I was doing this work before I was a member of council. Her and I actually designed in part as a team, um, the re-int, the re-integration, re-intervention rather, policy for the county and applied for a federal grant. I have been doing this work, uh, it has affected me all my life and I have been as a professional. So my work in this, although I am a councilperson, um, that in many ways I would be doing this work anyway. When I ran a social service agency, I was in this work and I understand it. And so one of the things I think we need to focus on, and, um, have we had the police budget, the, we have the police budget hearings yet?
Yes, we did.
How long did it take?
Councilmember, uh, we had it last Thursday, I believe, maybe two hours. This was not part of it. It was two hours. I, I, I believe about two, two hours, I guess.
All right. So the police budget is a hundred and 20 million dollars. The fire department budget is 90 million dollars. The EMS department's budget is 26 million dollars and public safety by itself is 12 million dollars. That's 248 million dollars, a quarter of a billion dollars we spend every year on public safety. When I started this work, the question I asked, and I forgot about Shot Spotter, right? The question I asked is what's the value of a black life? How much money are we willing to invest to stop black people from being shot? So let's be clear about this work, even though there are other issues. At its core, this work is about preventing black people being shot. And they are primarily shot by other black people in black communities. So at the core, we have to start there, that if we want to make our city safer, we have to stop black people from being shot by black people in black communities. That's not just my focus, that's what all of the research says. And I've read most of them, I've talked to the University of Pittsburgh and their evaluators. There's actually a federal crime statistician at CMU, I've had these conversations. So, all right, now, for years, I have argued that we know how to stop it. Let's fund the program. And even though we spent 200, 248 million dollars on public safety, I had to fight and argue and scrap to get the city to spend 400,000 on a program to stop black people from killing black people. I had to fight for many years, every year they wanted to cut the funding and they did cut the funding. We spent pennies on stopping black homicides, yet we spent 248 million dollars in public safety in a system that sometimes black people don't feel safe in. in a system that sometimes black people don't feel safe in. So we are now at the, at this time though, where there's been a whole idea of, okay, let's talk about reimagining police. And so we've had a chance to take some money, very little, but for the first time that I've been arguing about doing this work, we finally have the resources to do some of it. Certainly not at the scope of the problem, not as much as other cities. Other cities were putting a million and a half, two millions dollars into these programs twenty years ago. We would not. We put three hundred and thousand. All right. So let's try to talk about what the program really looks like. Now there are, so you have to start with understanding the real core of this. The real core of this is black homicides. There are, there are, so you have to start off with the Group Violence Initiative, formerly the Pittsburgh Initiative to Reduce Crime. That's the core program and then we'll build out. So, so we can understand the model. So that program has three parts to it. There are three parts to that program. There is the public safety or police component, but the police say this has to stop and we will not tolerate violence and we will do pull levers or use every available resources to get shooters off the street. The second component is, and the part until recently we never had, was this comprehensive community services to these at-risk families and these at-risk people saying that we will provide you with job training and social service and all the other things that are causing you to be high at risk and likely to do shootings. And then the third part becomes these trusted community voices, right? These legitimate community voices, mothers who have lost violence. OGs, former gang members who all come and say, this has to stop. That's the actual group violence model, right? All right. So that model, which should have always been funded at about one point five, two million dollars, only now has been funded on an appropriate matter. That funding though, doesn't really do the social work. It simply does the outreach and helps coordinate the activity. It only does the outreach and it coordinates the activity. You still need other dollars to do the other parts, the social work part. Now, then you take the community of, of, of health and safety now, you're now layering on the other components necessary because we know that violence, although it has the specific activities and there's specific interventions, that's the intervention, you have to move to a prevention model that prevents these people from shooting in the first place, right? They need better housing. They need drug rehabilitation. They need jobs. Now, we also know where intervention stops shootings right now and you got to put a couple million dollars in intervention programs. You also have to put multiple million dollars into prevention programs, except prevention will not stop tomorrow's shooting. It will stop because the shooters we know are between eighteen and twenty-five or something like that, right? And so all of the after-school programs are important, but they're not going to stop the shooting tomorrow. All of the homeless intervention is important. Won't stop the shooting tomorrow. But they will, if done right, over time, stop the next generation of shooters. And so what we're doing now, those are called intervention programs. So there are three sort of buckets of where the dollars need to go. Prevention programs, intervention program, reimagining policing. Now, all of these things take place among specific people in specific places. They're not everywhere in the city, right? You're not having shootings in Mount Washington. You don't have shootings in Shadyside. You're not having shootings in Squirrel Hill. You're not having that level of intensive violence. We know they're primarily in black communities among black people. It has to be done strategically and carefully and it has to be done coordinated. For years, we would do these one-offs. We would put a little bit of money because the reason we did the one-offs was not because we never knew the models. We always knew the models. We wouldn't fund it. Let me say this again. We, this not, and I want to answer Bobby's. Bobby, this is not a question of the national experts. All of the research says that the group violence model is the most effective way. We are part of the National Initiative, the National Initiative for Safe Community. There is only two models to do violence. There's only two. There's only two blue ribbon models. I've, I've read them. I understand them. I've testified about them. There are other programs, but the models are actually consistent and they are eighty percent the same. We know how to stop violence. We know there's only two models. There's only two, right? And they're kind of confusing because they have the same name.
Councilman, sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Councilman Wilson had, do you want to talk, Councilman?
Was he directing towards, or are we having an interrogative or?
Councilman, did you have a question for Councilman Wilson when you mentioned him or you were just over? Okay, all right, continue, sorry.
No, he was just, what I was saying is, since he's new, I have not shared probably the extent, the extent of my participation and story. Right? So I wanted, and, and I think we need a post.
I don't understand why me being new has anything to do with it. So.
Well, I'm just telling my story then.
About that, I just don't.
You're talking about the national models. I'm suggesting that we've already done that. We've had over years all the national experts, we've looked at the national models, those, we can do it again, but we already know.
I got my own story about how I came to office and what I saw.
The models are already there and in place.
What we're talking about is transparency and intervention and how we can prove that this is actually working.
Well, you need, and that's why you need, I think, the statistics person and perhaps, and originally we hired the University of Pittsburgh to do our assessment, right? I am not against having an external community partner. There's really two. There's, there's the university, which originally we had, when we originally did the program that we designed, the partner was the University School of Social Work that did the evaluation piece. And I'm, I'm really supportive of having an external organization do the evaluation piece. We, we interviewed the University of Pittsburgh and CMU and the national person there and I talked to both of them. The other one was Dr. Wallace, Professor of Social Work out of the School of University of Pittsburgh. And so I'm, I'm in favor of having an external, I think the program should have an external evaluation. I'm with you on that. And I think it should be, I have no problem with it being transparent. I'm simply saying that the model does exist and is based on blue ribbon models. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm simply saying that you were not in office when we did have these conversations about the Blue Ribbon Panel. You were not in office when David Kennedy came, who is arguably the national expert in this work, John Jay College. He, when he came to council and talked about it in person, you just, you weren't here. I'm not saying it's good or bad. You just physically weren't here. And that's why I'm having this conversation a little bit, not just for you, for everybody, because it's been fourteen years I've been doing this work and these experiences. All right. And so I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm suggesting to you is that, so, so, so the stop, so, so let's go now into the way this city is designed. At least the way it's supposed to be designed, but I hope that we do. It's not my job. I'm not the mayor. I simply help work with the mayor to design what it looks like. So you have these, you have these three or four things that should be working collaboratively together. You have the Stop the Violence Steering Committee, which is an internal committee that should oversee all of this work. Right? Made up of the mayor's office, public safety office, the county, a sort of overview of the experts of government who are doing this work, right? And they should meet monthly and oversee. Then that group has host community roundtables, which quarterly brings all the community people in to make sure that we're coordinated in this work to get the, with the best information that they're giving, giving them our information so that the city and the community groups are working collaboratively always at the same time. So you have, and then you have the Stop the Violence Fund that theoretically will provide funding to do a little of these three different things. Prevention, intervention, reimagining the police. And then structurally, in my opinion, and you know, that's, I've argued this from the very beginning, you have these twin offices that I think should both be, they should both be in public safety. One, the Office of Community Health and Service, Health and Safety. The other one, the Office of Community Violence Prevention. They should be twin offices underneath one director in the same place that co- that comprehensively and collaboratively run the day-to-day staffing of the programming and then coordinates what the city's doing but what the nonprofits are doing so that we have a coordinated, comprehensive program. Now, that has always been the vision, right? We've only gotten the funding to actually do it over the last twelve months. And so I am extremely hopeful because, because we are doing both prevention, which is the umbrella stuff that Laura's talking about. We're doing the intervention stuff that Reverend Grayson and Cornell, who are my friend and former student and other people are doing, right? And then we have the community-based organizations that are doing their work. And so up until now, we never had the resources, right? We never had the resources. We had the two hundred and fifty bill, million dollars in the public safety, but for the first time, we put money into these prevention, intervention and reimagining police programs. And the director, assistant director and Laura has been excellent. Now, you know, I, I will continue, you know, my advocacy for this, having been around and being part of its architect. I think it is the right model. I'm willing to listen to others. I have, you know, the model that we've used. Although I don't talk about it, but I have been part of this conversation. The models we use are nationally accredited and researched and have outcomes. The, the, the Stop Shooting and the Bleeding Out books are in my office. Any member of council who wants to read the books, you know, humbly, my name's in one of them, right? You're welcome to read it. I am at any time willing to share what I know. Of twenty years of talking to Eugene Rivers, who was one of the inventors of the Boston Miracle. When I talked to him, there are other organizations, other models that I know of that we've not implemented. There was a couple in Pennsylvania. That, they're not models, they're programs. There are other programs we can do. The model is sound. We can talk about various programming that we may want to do. I'm a great, I'm a great hope. For the first time, because of the Councilman Lavelle and I and the willingness of this council, for the first time, we are making a definitive statement that black lives are worth something. We're putting four or five million dollars into saving black lives. Not entirely black lives, otherwise too, but the core of this is to save black lives. We spend two hundred and fifty million dollars and I've been on council for fourteen years. And I've been at every, mostly every public hearing about this, the police. I've never seen council vote down one funding for the police. Not one funding for fire department, not one funding for EMS. If they ask for ten million tomorrow, he would vote yes in fifteen minutes. For the first time, and I know it's going to be uncomfortable, right? To have this investment in helping black people in black communities and being laser-like effective at it. I, I know that it's uncomfortable, maybe not for you, but it's going to make it uncomfortable because it's a, it's a shift of priority. These dollars in this fund is part of a, and it has to be coordinated. Those are two words. It has to be coordinated and comprehensive. Lastly, I have the highest amount of respect and gratitude to Director Hisrich, to our Chief of Police and to Shetara, who has coordinated this effort. We are in place now to do something strategic, historic and effective in our city. But we must keep the focus. At the core of this work is to stop black men, mostly men, but to stop them from being shot. That's the corner, the cornerstone of this work. We should never get moved too far from it because that's the pandemic within the pandemic, right? That hasn't stopped. The pandemic, COVID nineteen. But there has been nationally in our city, this wave, and it's not just in inner cities, in the suburbs and the rural communities. You have these black men being shot and we now as a city have said, they count. And we're going to invest specific resources to stop it. And we know it has to be prevention, intervention and policing. And so I thank you for your leadership. I don't have questions. I'm completely supportive of, of the work and will continue to, and hope, look forward to having a post-agenda just on this so that we can talk about the model in greater detail, talk about the, the programs in greater details. Talk about, because one of the things I think, and again, this would be very, you need to be clear. Prevention money and intervention money are not the same thing. When people say stop the balance, a lot of times they're thinking put money in after-school programming. You should. Put money into, you know, Meals on Wheels or counseling programs. All those things are great. And the answer, it has to be coordinated. And if you, if you leave the, the county to do the social work, it won't coordinate. We won't have the resources to get, to coordinate it with the outreach workers to coordinate it with the city police. So you need to have the city's own social workers to coordinate this effort. And that's what this overall process gets to do. So I look forward to the, the post-agenda. I'm sure when we're going to have it, perhaps we should wait till the new year to overview exactly what the comprehensive coordinated model looks like. So people can see it as I tried to explain it, and they pray in a poor way, but I tried to explain what the model looks like currently and then we can tweak it, change it, get an evaluation piece or other things that will be need moving forward. Thank you for this moment.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question. So the feasibility of this fund down the road, or sorry, Councilmember, sorry, go ahead. I, I know there was an interaction. Go ahead.
Go before me.
Go ahead.
You know, usually the chair likes to go last.
Yeah, that's why. I didn't know you had another question.
I just want to make a final, just kind of wrap up what my thoughts are here. So, you know, I had an interaction before I got in office. It was whenever I visited, it was actually a housing authority property and the leader, one of the leaders in the community took me to an area where there was, people were, you know, they experienced violence. They were saying, they were saying, hey, can you help us get this? This piece of plywood, you know, turned into a window because the window was shot out. And then can you also get someone to spackle over the bullet hole that went through the property into the drywall? And I thought, well, how long ago was this? And they said, two weeks. It's like blown away. And so this is a couple of years ago. So then I went, tried to make some contacts, even though I wasn't in office yet. And although I won my primary and I was trying to set myself up for being an elected official. And I learned through that conversation with, you know, the housing authority, he said, well, you know, they didn't, no one contacted us. I was like, are you kidding me? Like, who put the board in the window? And it just blew me away. And I thought that, you know, maybe there was like system that was set up where, you know, low barrier, like, you know, low barrier, the services were set up where people came in, they knew exactly, talked with the family. They went in, spangled it immediately, but apparently the family just left. So I don't know. I'm sure there's some gaps in that story. I'm not saying anyone here at this table is responsible for that. I'm just telling you about an experience that I had. I further learned that, yes, there is Paul Abernathy that shows up after violence happens, you know, for trauma response. There are other services, GBI is involved, but the point is, like, how does that happen? How do I, why am I the one that has to go? And I don't want to center myself in this situation. All I'm saying is that what I'm looking for is just, you know, a data-driven response to violence that happens. So if we have a model, great. Let's try and figure out, you know, if that intervention's working, what are all the services? Are we tracking how many times we just, I think we just renewed the contract with Paul Abernathy. How many times he comes to us, you know, and then how, how are those families doing? How are the people that are, that, you know, affected? How was that? You know, how was that, how's that working? I tried to implement that in, in, in one situation and we were trying to get other people trained in the community to actually be trauma response. People, when Paul Abernathy shows up, it didn't work out as well as I, I'd like to see it, but I think there's some hope there. Because that's how a real community, you know, people are always like, how do we get involved with that part of the community? So I think it's important that we think of models that involve, you know, lifting up others that way, but also tracking it, understanding the model, does that work? I understand intervention is obviously key to it. So, you know, before it happens, can we do overlays of maps on where, you know, where we're putting the outreach workers? Like, I just want to see all that data. If we're, I just want to finish my point. So it, like, for instance, if we're, I'm not saying it's not happening. I just, I love. I like to hear about like a model of, if we're gonna provide buprenorphine to people who are overdosing, I'm sorry, who have experienced overdose, um, you know, after they were, they're reversed and, and, and they are, um, you know, then get set up with possibly a PCP so that they can get that, uh, prescription going. If that's not effective, we drop it. If that's just not an effective model, like, anywhere in the nation should just drop any sort of ineffectiveness that happens. If we are not successful with reducing lift assists in the city over, you know, the course of the years, when we're like really focusing on, okay, do we give them, you know, do we provide them the right care? I just wanna hear the, the, like, a similar language, where we're going towards, um, with the Stop the Violence Trust Fund in terms of like, you know, exactly what, uh, the council was talking about in terms of, um, believe he said his words were, you know, you know, black men dying at, you know, at the, you know, the cause of violence, because of, because of violence. And so, I just think we can get there. Um, and that's why I'm, I'd like to, you know, further refine my comments earlier and just say I'd like to work with Councilman Burgess on a, uh, post-agenda, so that we can really dial down, uh, what the model is and how we're really tracking the data, because, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing that we're doing that, but I just really, really like to see it, and I also wanna do that with, um, with the Office of Community Health and Safety, uh, is doing as well, uh, so we can just see how both models are working. Uh, we don't have to, we can do it in two separate post-agendas, but also, um, uh, it, it's gonna be important to just look at, because some of that is, you know, obviously community health saves more, some of that is preventative, and I guess with the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, we're talking about more intervention.
We definitely agree with you, and that's why I emphasize the importance of having a community analyst. Prior to this trust fund, we couldn't devote any more resources, any more people, and, uh, city staff was just at capacity. And that skillset that we need to do, uh, the, actually analyzing the data, overlaying the maps, partnering with other entities, uh, the school district, uh, Father Paul and his team, things like that, to actually do some data sharing. What does that look like? Because we do need to, like, the, the comprehensive picture, is this effective? And we can't really measure that on our data and our statistics alone. We need to know how are the presence of our outreach workers and the work that they're doing are actually impacting the schools that they're in. And so as we grow this, those are the things that we wanna do. We wanna take that deeper dive into it, and then as far as the housing authority is concerned, we have our outreach workers, and they can track it so far, but when we're dealing with, um, and I'll just use the two entities that you, that you named, Housing Authority as well as, uh, the Neighborhood Resiliency with their, their trauma van and things like that, um, we can influence, we can encourage, we can have conversations, housing authority is at the table, but we really can't influence their ticketing process. We won't stop saying it, though, because at that point, that family's still in a dangerous situation. At that point, uh, they are prone to another act of violence, or now they've relocated, but to where? Like, you know, we've built that relationship and we, we can't track, you know, where individuals are, so, uh, they're.
Yeah, I, I just think what's unique with the situation is just like, trying to understand, similar to how we're trying to partner with AHN in terms of co-response, like, what we're doing in terms of, I don't know if you coined it as co-response, but some sort of, the, 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 the full response to violence in the community.
Yes, and so now that we have the resources, so we can, you know, put more people in place and put the technology in place, uh, we were capturing data at a low level, just through our, our reports, you know, how many interactions, how many engagements, how many follow-ups and things like that. Now we're at a place, uh, that we have the money and we're really to, ready to level up and really evaluate community impact and what does that look like? And not only will it help us, um, you know, for next year and our service is working, but also, uh, indicate, do we need to pivot, like you said, is this model not working, then we drop it? But we can only get to that assessment once we have that full picture, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, uh, just a quick question, uh, obviously transparency, we talked about it, director's been very helpful with that on a number of things, data-driven, uh, for all of our departments, especially police, so I think we're getting to that, I think more analyst is very helpful. So I guess my question would be the feasibility of this long-term, if, you know, the Stop the Violence money, if, if I'm right, is it eighty percent has to go to outside agencies? So what we need to look at as a council is your departments that have done a good job, and you know, you mentioned forty patients, follow-ups, things like that, and I'm sure the numbers are gonna grow over the years. I think we, as a council, need to look up, what's the feasibility of continuing to fund these programs over the next five years? And, you know, when more and more organizations start doing this work, does the Stop the Violence just go to those organizations and there's a bigger pot for what you all are doing? So I think that's more my question, if eighty percent is going to outside agencies who connect with you, what do you need internally to help you as well? Is it just hiring, you know, five more people, ten more people? What would that be? Um, and if you don't have that answer right now, that's okay, um, but I think that's something long-term that a plan would go a long way in showing council where we need to spend our internal money before we start spending it externally on other organizations that help us, so.
We certainly need analysts, I mean, I will say it over and over again, um, but to the point that I made earlier, to actually take our data and analyze it from a community perspective and not a law enforcement perspective. But we also need more crime analysts.
Right, that's, yeah, I think that would be the number, you know, looking forward to the next few years and what's going on? What, what is that number that council has to have in our heads? So that instead of eighty percent, we could actually give all of it out to neighborhood groups, and we can fund you internally and put our resources where our mouths are, this is what we want to fund, this is a priority in council, in public safety, how do we do that? So that's more or less my statement, so I just wanted to thank everybody for being here. I know throughout this budget process, you all have been very helpful, getting us all the information, answering all of council's questions um, throughout this process, so thank you very much, uh, for all your hard work. And now it is my duty, so I don't mess this up, to announce that, uh, we, our next budget hearing is tomorrow at one-thirty, the Department of Innovation and Performance chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. So now it is my process to recess the meeting. So this meeting, this budget hearing is now recessed till tomorrow afternoon.